To the board trustees meeting, we'll call for attendance, please.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes. All right, we have a forum. I would ask everybody to please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A people being saved.
Heavenly Father, you have given us some absolutely beautiful days with the sun in the daytime and some of the most spectacular sunsets we've seen in a long time. We thank you for that. Just pray, Lord, that we take the time to enjoy what you've given us on this earth. Lord, in all of his wisdom, Solomon told us that every one of us make decisions on a daily basis that we're convinced in our own mind are right, but you look at the heart. So I pray, Lord, that we would take from that wisdom and that we would examine our own hearts before we say anything, Lord, whether it's in business or in personal matters. We just pray today that you'd have your hand of blessing in this meeting. I pray that you give the wisdom to our leaders if they need, help us all to conduct the business we have with discretion and wisdom. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
All right, we have announcements and correspondences. Do you have any announcements or correspondences? All right, hearing none. We have no scheduled meeting guests today. Meeting minutes from October 11th, 2025, are on the table until Mike returns. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, I'll second for discussion. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Nope.
Okay, hearing none, roll call.
All right, Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, purchase orders. We had no purchase orders today, but we did have warrants. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the warrants as presented.
So moved.
I will second. Roll call.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, we'll now move into our public comments section. We ask as a reminder, there's a three-minute limit per person, and we do thank you for in advance for being here today. We'll start at the top of the list and work our way down with Mr. Bill Anderson. You have the floor first, sir.
Good morning. My name is Bill Anderson. I'm here as a resident of Brimfield. I attend most of the trustee meetings and listen to everything that's going on with the township. For those of you who want the truth, there is a site you can go to on Facebook called Brimfield Truth and Accountability. They post only documented facts and truth. The site used to post on Brimfield Township Ohio Neighborhood Watch, but it has been blocked because of political pressure. But I can tell you the site is posting the truth. Talking points about transparency and truth by some that are running for office are just that, talk. True transparency is not the case with this board. Brimfield residents should know what is really going on over the last four years and why we are in this financial situation. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time. Next up on the agenda, Tom Johnson. Your floor is yours.
Good morning, and good morning to my fellow residents. Today I rise to speak in concern Brimfield Township resident. During my time engaging with the community, I heard persistent rumors about internal issues in our township government. At first, I brushed them off as just grumblings from folks with gripes. But as more people shared similar stories, I decided to look into it properly. I submitted a Freedom of Information Act request to get the facts straight. And what I received validated many of those rumors. Now, some will categorize this as hate or political theater. It's not. This is holding government leaders accountable. The documents point to a hostile work environment with allegations of intimidation, potential conflicts of interest, and even hints of ethics investigations. Without diving into the specifics, it's hard for me to say specifics, it's clear there's a problem that affects how our township operates and treats its employees. This raises important questions for all of us. Did public funds go towards settlement or legal fees? Has an audit on fraud concerns been released? And where are the findings on retaliation? One employee's report highlighted potential misuse of authority, yet it seems those accused face no consequences while others did. This erodes trust in our leadership and makes us wonder if we are truly prioritizing a healthy, accountable environment for everyone. But here's the exciting part. We, the people, hold the power to make real positive change. If you'd like a current dysfunctional government, vote for the incumbent. If you, as a voter, wish to hold the power, vote for real positive change. Vote for two new trustees. On November 4th, let's head to the polls with optimism and vote for fresh voices who will bring transparency and unity. Together, as a community, we can build a stronger, more responsive Brimfield that works for all of us. Thank you. If you have any additional, need any additional information, please visit me on Facebook.
Thank you for your comments this morning. All right, next we have Marjorie Weaver. Did I say that correct? Go ahead, you can have that.
I just signed in because I thought if I wanted to make a comment, I wasn't sure what was on the agenda.
Yeah, so this allows you to.
But I will make one comment. I really appreciate you doing the pledge of allegiance. We were at a zoning meeting last night here, and that wasn't done before the meeting. It kind of surprised me. So thank you for doing that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, and last we have James McKee.
Morning, everyone. I just wanted to publicly address Mr. Koya for indicating how I publicly accosted him while he was with his daughters. That did not happen. Approximately four months ago, I tried to have a conversation with Mr. Koya here in regards to the zoning change that he made. He said, oh, there's a cooling off period. Really didn't want to discuss it. Blew me off. Then I tried to call him. I left the message. He never returned my call. And then I saw him at Walmart, probably a month and a half to two months later. I said, Koya. He stopped. Yes, came back. He was with his two daughters. The tallest daughter during the whole conversation was standing there doing the helicopter maneuver, bored out of her mind. The other daughter was leaning against his leg, pushing rocks and writing letters with her foot. The conversation only got elevated one time when Nick tried to talk over me, and I was not going to let that happen. Then conversation calmed down. We continued. Conversation only lasted six to eight minutes. Then I had to get eggs for my mother to get her breakfast made. As you know, during candidate's night, Mr. Koya usually doesn't stop talking. Mr. Koya voted against the majority to have unlimited outdoor storage against a 90-year-old surviving spouse of a Korean War veteran. The trees are coming over the property line 30, 40, 50 feet. That involves electricity. There needs to be electricity there in regards to some of my mom's medical needs. There was a public hearing that I really didn't quite understand why campaign signage and things like that were on there three, four months ago. And then later on down the road, I see that there's signage throughout the corridor of Brimfield Township, which is between Route 18 and a little past 76 on 43. I was wondering, hmm, what's going on here? And then I see Mr. Koya's sign at his buddy's Joe, the barbecue guy, his shop. And two years prior, there was no signage allowed throughout that corridor. So we need to stop having our own agenda here to prioritize and focus signage and campaign things and do what's best for the residents of Brimfield Township. One of the things Mr. Koya mentioned during the candidate's night was Mr. Ladd's contract. And I guess my question here is, when is Mr. Ladd's contract up? Are you going to try and sneak through and renew that contract before the new administration? He's getting a really, really high annual salary, which exceeds all the other people by $50,000 that are zoning inspectors. Thank you.
Thank you for your time today. We appreciate it. All right, hearing no other public comments today, we'll take all those comments under consideration. We do appreciate everyone for being here and speaking. We'll move into the safety portion of our meeting. Any safety concerns to report to me? You know, Dave, you put up some new signage for us over by the ballfields and the elementary school.
Yeah, down at Town Square. Yeah, with the new building going on there, we stuck up some children's play signs. There was residents who were worried. Before, what we had to do was have a 25 mile an hour sign because it used to be a dead end street to a cul-de-sac, so we added another 25 mile an hour sign for the people coming out of that development. We'll readjust the signs when they get done building there. For now, we put it to where we knew it wouldn't get hit, so.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into the business portion of our meeting, and we'll start with the police department. Captain Anikens, your floor is yours, sir.
We don't have any old business to address. The only new business is kind of just informational. We have been dealing with a constant plumbing issue, well HVAC and plumbing issue at the police department. We've had multiple sewage backups in the past month. Kline Cavalli and Alan Drain have both been excellent. Just giving the boards a heads up that we are having to spend money to try and figure out what's going on, and we're going to end up spending more money to figure out why we keep having sewage backups, including in our lobby through the floor drains. And we have found that the pipe has settled underneath the building. So we're trying to find every possible way to not tear up the floor and dig under the ground and try and fix the settle pipe. So we are trying to work some things out, but we'll probably be coming to the board with some expenditures to fix our plumbing issues.
This is new. We've never had the backups before.
We have had one backup. We had one pipe break. We've had a lot of plumbing issues. Kline Cavalli are our best friends. Actually, I told the one plumber today that I could just put him on payroll if he wanted to start working for us. They've been great trying to find ways to get around a major overhaul for us since the building is just over 10 years old. But just giving the board a heads up that there might be more expenditures coming on that.
Okay.
And we are going to request an executive session for, well, you have the sheet over there, or a contract issue.
Contracts. Yep. So we will deal with that at the end. It is already on the agenda. Is there any questions or comments for please and fire this morning? Hearing none, we will move into the fire department. Chief, your floor is yours.
Okay, just some informational stuff also. Just to follow up on updates for traffic light preemption discussion. We had a couple of meetings back where we talked about as the lights continue to grow down 43, heading north of 18 preemptive, the changing of the lights when emergency vehicles enter the intersections. I had a discussion with a company that met with me a couple of days ago and started having a brief discussion. So two things with that. So one, the state doesn't fund it, and that was kind of where I was going with not having a lot of money of hoping that the state would put some of those preemptive measures in place when they put up the lights, but they don't do that. There are grant fundings out there that would do that for us, but you have to get a grant to do that. So first, it doesn't help us if the state doesn't put up the funding for us to do that. But talking to the company, and those are secondhand companies that would put those in for us, it was hard to get a rough number out of them of what the cost would be, but they started at $4,500 a vehicle was some of the cost. This is me talking in some of the numbers that were spit out. It looked like it could be anywhere from $4,500 to $10,000 per vehicle. At that, at that cost, I would rather just slow down for the lights, you know, and move our way through like we do as we usually do, so.
Who's the grants? Is it grants to the state of Ohio?
We didn't get that far into it. He said he could come back and talk to me further if we wanted to discuss that. But I think the initial ask, what I was asking was I was hoping that the state would pay for something like that. And they, they will if the grants are received.
So we got to go with the grant.
Yeah, so again, being dumb on the situation, I was hoping, hey, you're going to put up a light. It's a state route. Will the state just pay for it and put it up? No, they won't, is the answer I got back.
And then is the cost per vehicle, but is there additional cost for hardware on the lights?
Again, we didn't, they didn't want to discuss all of that.
Yes, there's equipment that has to go into every traffic box, so then we would have to, have to get that cost.
Yeah, so we started talking and I kind of sent them on their way. I wasn't ready to be.
The cruiser was done, too.
There was.
The vehicle, the newest technology is GPS-based. Before, it had something simple as a strobing light that would fire off by your light bar. But now they use GPS technology to track the car, and then when you get in range, it makes the changes for you.
I did have further discussion with department members who work at other departments and just didn't have a great feeling about that it was worth that kind of money. Would be their opinion also?
I don't know. Cap, do you have any opinion on it?
Again, if it was a city with, we had a lot of lights, but just to do it just for a couple of lights here and a couple of lights there, I don't know for that yet. So if a grant wants to come in and give us some money like other things, maybe. But we had an initial discussion. I don't know if you have an opinion on it.
I wouldn't want to spend $30,000 for that.
Sounds like it would be quite a bit more.
Just for cars. If it was $3,000 a car, I don't want to spend that right now. I'd be interested just to hear who the grants are through, so maybe we can get some grant information just so we can put it on the back burner for something to look at. Because if it's, it was on the match on it, right?
That was, again, that was an initial conversation, so.
I doubt there's any specific for it. It'll just be go-to and an EMA grant that fits in this category. It would be something like that, and you're going to look at 10% match on most of those anyway.
10 to 25. Okay, the three entry-level firefighters will graduate from the Ohio Fire Academy on October 31st. So a few of us will be down there for graduation. I know that's come and win already, and assuming they will pass, I hope they will. No, they're doing, they're doing pretty well, so we'll be down there for that, and then they'll be back for a few months before they attend EMT basic schooling. So that's just informational on that. And just wanted to let the board know, I did attend this month's zoning commission meeting and had a productive conversation with myself and the board on multiple topics related to fire department's capabilities. So we just attended that and may be back to discuss further with them, but it was a good productive conversation. So that's all I have.
Any questions for the fire department? Hearing none, we'll move on to administration. All right, under administration, we're looking for board approval. Following the recommendation of the healthcare broker and review by representatives from each bargaining unit, continue with Brimfield Township's medical insurance coverage with Soma Care and dental vision coverage with the standard for 2026. Roy gave me an update on this, and it looks like we're going to be at 2% for numbers. Jasmine, is that what you've got also?
Yeah.
So last year, they came to us asking for a 10% increase in our insurance coverage. They went back out to market on that, and Soma Care came back in at a 0% last year. And this year, they're asking for a 2% increase. This has been, I believe, both hearing unions were notified and had conversations on that. There was full support from them and understanding with the 2%. Jasmine, do you have anything on that?
No, I have reviewed the contribution model that was given over to us by the broker, and it looks good.
All right, so they're looking for a board approval on this. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the engagement of Soma Care and dental and vision coverage through the standard for coming year 2026.
So moved.
I will second that. Jasmine, is there anything else you want to do before we approve that?
No.
All right, and you're good with the 2% increase?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll call for approval.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Then we'll move into zoning and economic developments. Go ahead. Your floor is yours, sir.
Thanks, Mike, Nick. So hey, I just want to clarify, there was some, you know, obviously public comments again, once attacking and harassing myself personally. I think that's disturbing, to say the least. The following of me around town as I'm doing my job, I find is very disturbing as well. I just want to address that and say that I'm very concerned about that. The second thing is my salary. Since I was brought up, I do economic development. I am underpaid for economic development, and I do not take medical benefits. So if you look at my salary, I'm below most fire, most policemen, everything is a whole package. And that's for public record, if anybody wants to see that. Once again, I'm not being condescending, that the board couldn't afford to hire me at the time. So they threw that to-go truck to take home as part of my package because they couldn't pay me. So I just want to clarify that. With that being said, I'm requesting board approval to send 2280 Talmage Road to the prosecutor's office. This is signage in a road right of way, and there's photos attached.
I would like to make that motion.
I will second that motion for discussion. Mike, this is the one that you and I have been conversing about, too, with, we've had multiple complaints come in.
This is, this is the signs, and right of way, it's out by the street, and they're flying in front of the poles.
Okay. And we've sent letters to them already?
We have, yep.
So now we just turn it over to prosecutor?
Correct.
Well, why don't they just move that sign back and put it on their property instead of in the right of way? So that when you do.
We, we have made phone calls to them. Jenny has made several phone calls, and they still put it in right of way.
They still put it in the right of way. Well, shame, shame, shame.
These are those tall banners.
Yeah, the two.
They are.
So it's hard to see past.
The wind, the wind blows them.
Obviously, are in support of a small business, but the neighbor can't see coming out of the driveway.
So we just ask them for a move back five, 10?
That's it.
You have to solve the issue.
Yep, correct.
Any other questions on sending 2280 Talmage Road to the prosecutor's office?
None.
All right, hearing none, roll call for?
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Any other questions or comments for zoning and economic development? Hearing none, we'll move right into road department. Dave, your floor is yours, sir.
All right, thanks, Nick. Just some updates. The road striping is completed throughout the township on the township roads. Sherman Wood paving project, it's completed. There's a little pickup stuff they got to do, but the paving part of it's completed. The chip and seal project, it's completed except for a punchlet was they'll be back in the spring to take care of that. This time of year, the weather is too cold at night and stuff to let the adhesives attach to the road right of way, so they'll wait until next spring. Crack sealing roadways, right now, we're in the midst of doing that. We've got three allotments done. We're working on another one right now. Some of the new updates, starting next week on the 20th, the road department will be back on eight-hour days. So we'll be here five days a week. And then once the snow gets here, seven days a week, you know, that fun stuff. All the dump trucks are back from TSI. Everything's been fixed, taken care of. Everything's ready to go. We have a guard rail repair on Klein Road I'm working on right now. There was a car accident. They hit the guard rail, so Lakery Construction's going to come in and fix it for us. Not sure of the time, but they'll be here soon. The guard rail's fine where people can still, you know, still do its job, but it just needs repair. Let the board know, we're going to start looking into replacing the 2006 Chevy 4500 dump truck, which is our little red dump truck, which I got sitting out here. Out of framing and stuff, starting to rot away on that truck, so it's served its purpose all these years. Be 20 years old, it probably is 20 years old now, but it, it's just, we need to get a small dump truck back in. Instead of trying to take the big trucks out and fill potholes, pick up the brand, you know, off the road to have a smaller vehicle to do this. Let everybody know, here we go again. Howe Road is going to be closed starting December 22nd at 7:00 a.m. in the morning to 4:00 p.m. at night for the water and sewer installation for the Parks District over there. This time, they got a new plan. They're going to come in, we'll close the road during the day, but have it open overnight. So right at the Pleasant Lakes entrance and exit of that part of the allotment off of Howe Road, it's supposed to last for three days. So we'll get it in, hopefully they get in and get out this time, and they're done with it this time, so.
So it's October 22nd?
Yes, next Wednesday. I've already contacted the school and let them know about it. I was going to talk to Craig and Chris, you know, for this, they're all, know it's all there now.
Completely closed.
Completely closed at that intersection, so.
Say that again. Which intersection?
Right at the Pleasant Lakes intersection of Howe Road. They're going to be coming with two trenches across Howe Road, one for sanitary and one for water line. So they're going to plate it at night for people can use Howe Road in that intersection during the nights, but during the day between 7:00 and 4:00, it'll be closed. And then finally, the miracle finally showed up. O'Dark sent out the things last night for the salt pricing for this year. The pricing went up $1.39 a ton, which ain't too bad. We will be at $4,784 per ton this year for the price of our salt, which is a lot better. I've seen a lot of places we're setting at 80 and 90. So we are in really good shape in Fortage County when it comes to our pricing, which Morton Salt will be, who will be handling our salt again this year. And that's pretty much all I got.
Do we still owe summersalt?
That's, that's where I got a contact because I finally got the information at 6:30 last night. So I was looking at some of the paperwork stuff they sent over today, and kind of like they took the summersalt off. I mean, we're still going to have the amount of salt we ordered, but I think they pushed the summersalt to where you can consider winter salt, too, at the same time. Because that's, I was sending messages, trying to find out if I was going to get hit with a thing because I didn't order the salt, but we just, like I said, we just finally got the information last night that it all, everything passed, so. I mean, I'm going to try to get some summersalt, and I'm going to try to jump on some of it. Other than that, if it has to be just winter, it's winter. We got 100, maybe 200 in the building, so. We have something to start with, yes.
All right, any questions for road department? Thank you, Dave. We'll move into Parks and Ruts. Cassie, your floor is yours.
I just have a few informational items today. The Boo Cruise Halloween decorating contest voting is now open, and that's open through October 31st. Last Saturday, the 11th, we had our Boo Cruise kickoff movie night in partnership with the library. We had 25 people brave the cold and attend that, and it went very well. And I want to thank Joe for braving the cold with me and assisting with the movie, so thank you for that. This Saturday, the 18th, I will be attending the Fall Falcon Frenzy Truck Retreat event. And then we are working on Hometown Christmas on November 30th. And then new business, I will be hosting a Parks Community meeting on November 6th here at the Town Hall from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., just giving some people, giving the public background on our different parks and getting some input about plans for the future. And then I'm currently working on our 2025 year-end report, and that's all.
Any questions for the fire department? Hearing none, thank you, Cassie. Appreciate it. Information Technology, no updates. Joe, anything?
No.
All right, thank you. Under Cemetery, we had two deeds that we signed. Sue, any updates under Cemetery?
No.
Hearing none, we'll move right into Fiscal Office. Jasmine, your floor is yours.
Thank you. For fiscal, we just have one thing for board approval, and that is to request approval to increase our revenue budgets. Some of our funds have received more revenue than we have anticipated. Some of our funds have received more revenue than we have anticipated, so we just need to get that resolution so we can send that over to the Porch County Budget Commission.
I will entertain a motion to accept the fund increases for Fund One Thousand, General Fund. Fund Two Thousand Eleven Motor Vehicle License Tax, Fund Twenty Thirty-One Road and Bridge, Fund Twenty One Ninety-One Special Levy Fire, Fund Twenty Two Sixty-One Law Enforcement Trust, Fund Twenty Two Eighty-One Ambulance and Emergency, and Fund Thirty One Oh One Debt Retirement.
So moved.
I will second that. So Jasmine, we have predicted less money to come in, but we received more than that, so this goes over to the Budget Commission for approval.
Correct.
In this year?
Correct.
Any questions on that? Hearing none, we'll call.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Any questions for Fiscal? Hearing none. We do have an executive session. Before we go to executive session, anything for the good of Brimfield Township? Hearing none. I will make a motion that we move to convene an executive session pursuant to Higher Revised Code, Section One-Two-One Point Two-Two-G, for the purposes of considering the following manner, number four, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees considering their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. This will include the board of trustees, the fiscal officer, and the police captain.
So moved.
So I got a motion. Sue, will you second?
Second.
Yes.
All right.
Roll call.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion pass.
We are convening an executive session at eleven-thirty.